All right. Is he ready? All right. All right, everybody. We'll get it started here. The special meeting Wednesday, April 30th, 2025 of the Placerville City Council. Hi, everybody. Sure, why not? Let's all stand. I've done so many pledges of allegiance this week. I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you. Please call the.
Please call the roll.
Mayor Clarici?
Here.
Vice Mayor Gottberg?
Here.
Councilmember Carter?
Here.
Councilmember No?
Here.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Here.
Thank you.
All right. Let's adopt the agenda, please.
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda.
I'll second.
Okay, do we have any public comment on our agenda, Sue? No. Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Our one and only discussion action item, 4.1 fiscal year 25, '26, operating budget and capital improvement program budget review and discussion take it away staff. Okay, that on? You hear me? Okay. Just quickly, I guess I'd call this a housekeeping item. We are actually videotaping this live tonight for the public. So, please use the microphones as much as possible. I know they're limited, but when you're speaking, please grab a microphone so that we make sure it's recorded and the public can hear us also. So. So, I am going to turn this over to Dave Warren, but before I do that, I will say that as we're starting this process and you're looking at this, please be aware that we are facing a very tight budget year. I know we've been through some tough ones in the past, but from my perspective, this may be the toughest we've ever had to deal with. For my, in my time that I've been here in the last 14 years. So, please be aware of that of the, and I'm making this statement to the council and to staff. They know some, but it's going to be a difficult year. So, be aware of that as we go through these and talk about different things that where we're at, and we'll go from there. With that, Dave, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Cleve. Been sitting all day, so I thought I'd stand. So, it's been a while since we've kind of looked at the budget comprehensively and kind of look at all the components that go into the budget. I thought it would be a good time to kind of go through that. So, this is kind of an overview. We'll talk about budget basics, what goes into the budget, who develops the budget, the difference between an operating budget and the CIP budget and the budget development program. So, as most of you know, our fiscal year starts in July 1st and ends June 30th. The budget team, which develops the budget, includes the city manager and all department heads, as well as our assistant finance director. We do use fund accounting, which most businesses have one set of financial statements. They have one balance sheet and one income statement. The city has 50, and that's because we have different types of funding that we have to account separately. And that's according to the Government Accounting Standards Board, excuse me, that we follow their pronouncements, our financial statements and our budget, as well as governmental general accounting principles. So, it's very similar to private sector. GAAP is very, almost the same. And then state and federal laws we follow, as well as the city's laws, ordinances, so, our municipal code, as well as policies and procedures. We enter into agreements. For example, we have an agreement with the county for animal services. So, we have to budget for that. We also have our strategic plan. So, the council updated its strategic plan back in January and made some adjustments there. So, staff, we want to make sure that we build the budget according to those goals. HDL is our consultant that essentially projects our sales tax, as well as our add-on sales tax, Bradley Burns. We use their forecast for our budget. League of California Cities, highway user tax, SB 1, they provide those estimates for us. Our operating budget is pretty much for the day-to-day operations, police, public works, city council, so on and so forth. CIP budget, in contrast, is really for projects. So, if we're re-roofing a building, if we're paving a street, that belongs in our CIP budget. The council adopts the budget once a year in June, and then it's revised accordingly. It's a living document that can be revised at any time. So, the day-to-day operations for the operating budget, personnel, salaries, benefits. We do assume the actual person in the position, you know, what salary, what's the highest salary placement, which health insurance plan are they in? Are they first tier, second tier family? If it's vacant, we assume step three of the salary schedule. Services, utilities, any type of services that we budget or have, we budget for those. Materials and supplies, including fuel, non-fixture equipment, cars, computers, those kind of things. Training, travel, and conference, one of our most valuable asset is our personnel and making sure that they get the best training possible. Insurance, workers' comp, general liability, property, we have to budget for those, as well as utilities, we've mentioned those and other things. So, the operating budget does include the general fund, which is pretty much everything that's non-proprietary, meaning not water and sewer or a grant. Gas tax fund, we basically transfer all of our gas tax fund, highway user tax, to the general fund for road maintenance. Downtown parking, we do collect lease parking, as well as daily parking that pays for those programs like our pay stations. Grant funds, the city punches well above its weight in obtaining grants, and from year to year, those vary. We also have assessment districts. We have the BAD, which it's not, it's actually good, it's not bad. It's the benefit assessment district at the Ridge at Orchard Hill. We have a CFD over at Cottonwood Phases 4 and 6, and then two LMDs, Orchard Hill, as well as Cottonwood Park. We also have our add-on sales taxes, Measure H, which was passed in 2016, which can be used, or excuse me, 2010, which can be used for water sewer projects, as well as debt service. Measure J was approved in 1998 to enhance police officer salary and benefits. And then Measure L, of course, the most recent in 2016, that pays for streets, water, sewer lines, and storm drains. Water Enterprise Fund, that's obvious what that's for, Sewer Enterprise Fund, general liability, all of your workers' comp, general liability insurance and property insurance flow through that internal service fund. So, as of today, your total operating budget is 24.78 million for 2024 fiscal year. The primary funding sources are listed there, assessments, fees, grants, interest income, rates, taxes, sales tax. Sales tax makes up 59% of your general fund, which can be volatile, as well as property tax, business license, TOT tax, so on and so forth. In contrast, your CIP budget includes major improvements and repairs, including streets, storm drains, water lines, sewer lines, water reclamation facility improvements, and other facilities. And the dollar amount varies with CIPs from year to year. Some years, like for example, right now, we have the broadband project, the fiber. That's a $20 million project by itself, in addition to all the projects our city engineer has. And the remaining budget carries over from year to year, where the year, the annual budget, the operating budget, we typically don't carry over in those budgets. It just rolls in, rolls over into fund balance and is used for other things. So, CIP funds include general CIP fund, which basically is from the general fund, downtown parking district from fees, transportation fund, TIM fee fund, transportation impact mitigation fee for, from development for road widening, Measure H, Measure L, Water Enterprise Fund, and Sewer Enterprise Fund. And again, the primary funding sources, charges, fees, grants, interest income, and taxes. Budget development process, so your budget team starts, this year we started in December, a little earlier. We had our kickoff meeting. We start developing the budget. One of the first tasks is to develop the mid-year budget, which you received in March, and that provides kind of how we think we're going to do towards the end of the year. We also look at all of our line items for the following fiscal year, for '25, '26. As a team, we go through each line item where there's variances. So, has an account of balance gone up or down, and what is the justification for that? We also look at alternative service levels, which is primarily positions. It can also be change in program, increasing a program, closing out a program, CIP requests, capital outlay, which is equipment, conference training and travel, and other assumptions. So, we use forecasts, again forecasting our revenue and expenditures. The Measure H, Measure L committee reviews the draft CIP for Measure HL. They've actually reviewed that draft already. We'll come back to them in May to ask them to actually recommend it to the city council. And tonight, let's see, we talked about the governance workshop, that was in January. Budget workshop number one's tonight, budget workshop two. So, tonight, we're going to review the request by department that's in your binder. These are unedited, meaning that Cleve and I were presenting everything that was received by the team. Budget workshop number two, hopefully we'll present a balanced budget, and we'll make adjustments or make recommendations as far as adjustments to balance the budget. We have an open hearing scheduled for the first meeting in June, where people can come and ask questions, or if they want to add things to the budget, make requests, so on and so forth. Adoption, hopefully the second meeting in June will happen, and from that point, that's your budget, and it can be revised at any time. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. Seeing none, we'll move on. So, in your binder, there's, the first tab's your agenda, second tab is the CIP present, or excuse me, CIP requests. And there's a purple bar spreadsheet that kind of summarizes all the projects that we're recommending tonight. And behind that is the actual requests. So, the first one is the range maintenance. This is the shooting range, and Chief, if you could cover that one, kind of go over it.
Correction to report.
Dave said we're not necessarily recommending these, where these are what have been requested.
Yes, these are what's, each department are recommending.
I'm recommending.
Thank you, Cleve. So, the police department maintains a range located off Camp Navoo Road. I'm not sure if any of you have been, John, okay, a couple. So, that range has not undergone any upgrades or significant maintenance in its guest over 20 years. So, everything that happens out there is done through sweat equity by the members of the organization. Well, it's gotten to the point where the cement lanes are just deteriorating, creating unsafe footing conditions. There's also a large wooden backstop structure that, over the years, has just fallen apart as well. So, that's what this is. It's, a lot of the stuff that needs to be done out there, we have, you know, the ability internally to throw people towards it. It's the materials and some of the more specialized work that needs to occur that we need to reach out and try to get some help for that. Let me just go through all these, or stop and answer a question?
So, do you have, is the request here for just for materials, or is this like?
It's just for materials at this point. This cement, bringing in the cement, we can lay the forms, we can do stuff like that.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I don't know why she's asking up here.
Why don't we go through CIPs, and then after each section, you can ask for comments? Okay.
Sue did ask a question. The question was, do we ever open the range up to the public? And we do not. It's precluded by our insurance to do that. Next is the men's locker room. The current locker room is from the 70s. The lockers are super small, those real thin metal lockers. And all the equipment that we're issuing on officers today, they're required to store it. We prefer at the police department instead of leaving it in the trunk of their cars, which bad things normally happen when they do that. So, they're shoving their rifles in there, their computers, their radios, their uniforms, their body armor, and it's just gotten to the point where we're kind of bursting at the seams as far as their ability to safely store their equipment. The funding request is for lockers, and we'll put them in. So, it's just for the lockers from lockers.com. Similar to what we did to the FEMA, when we developed the FEMA locker room. We purchased the stuff and we put it together ourselves. Next. Question? And the carport gutters, it's just always been a CIP request, so I don't want to break tradition. I think it's been asked for for 10, 15 years now, so. It's great having the overhang. It's just about four feet too small, though. So, there's a sheet of water that comes down on the vehicles as the officers are putting their gear in, so it's a juggling act to try to get them, to load out their vehicles and stay dry. So, that's just asking for the gutters to be installed in the carport. That's it. Questions?
If you were to rank these in order of your highest priority, what would you say is the first, second, and third priority for you, Chief?
First would be the locker room, to ability, the ability to safely store organizational equipment. Second would be the range facility, and the last would be the carport.
Thanks, Dave. I was actually wondering if we could talk about the table first, because we have basically what this table shows, I want to explain kind of what this table shows and what this table doesn't show. So, every year, when we start looking at the budget, we go through the Measure H and L funds, and Measure L generates about 2.8 million a year, and Measure L, or sorry, Measure H is half of that, at 1.4. So, when we look at that, we have to kind of meet two needs. One is looking at all of the upcoming grants that we have, and we expect matching requirements on federal funds or state grants, and identify if we need Measure H and L funds for those projects. And then we also look at whatever the upcoming new maintenance needs and new project needs for the upcoming year. So, right now, the engineering department has a list of more than 90 projects. Some are funded, some are partially funded, and some only have a $25,000 placeholder to just begin the project. Of those 90 projects, we are actively working on 30 of them, and of the remaining projects, some are older that need to be closed out and taken off the books. Some have no active status because, one, we don't have enough funding to move the project forward, and, two, we don't have enough staff to perform the work. So, as you see in this table, we're actually not proposing any new engineering projects this year, we're just adding funds to existing projects. So, at the top of that list is our annual storm drain compliance project. That's just our MS4 permit. We use that to spend staff time on making sure compliance with our MS4 permit. The second one is the Smith-Bratt Road Storm Drain and Paving Project. That's the additional funds that we need for construction this year. We anticipate bringing the contract award to you guys in July. Also is the Giovanni Road Sewer Project. That one will be constructed in spring of '26, so we're planning construction funds for that. And then we have the Mallard Lane Maintenance Project, which we are going to design in-house, so this is additional funding that we're proposing for design. And the Placerville Drive Pedestrian Connectivity Project, we are taking that one to construction in August, and this is our anticipated match on the federal funds. Right now, we have about, I want to say $350,000 of Measure L eligible items, so this is smaller than that, which is great. We're able to maximize our federal funds on that project. And then we have the Kembellic, sorry, Canal Street Projects. So, we're currently doing a lot of work, looking at the Canal Street Projects and trying to figure out how we're going to get to the finish line. There is limited federal funding available, and we anticipate that we're going to end up needing to put more local funds on the project to get the project forward. There's going to be more information on that coming, but this is what we're expecting at this point in terms of design funds and right-of-way phase funds, to get us through the design right-of-way phase. And, let's see, before I dive into the water reclamation facility projects, at the bottom of the table, we have the Measure H and Measure L construction reserve projects, and we have a pretty significant amount of funding proposed to go to the Measure L construction reserve. And the reason being for that is, coming up in the next year, really the number one priority for us is the Placerville Drive projects. We have the Placerville Drive pedestrian and bicycle facilities project, and we have the bridge replacement project, both of which will be going to construction in 2026, in this coming fiscal year. And so, we really need to maximize the availability of the local funds we have available if we need matching funds. So, that's really the plan and intention there. We have some other projects that we will be moving into construction in the spring of '26 as well, and so it'll kind of be a balancing act which funds are available in the construction reserve for those projects. All right. So, with that being said, the water reclamation facility has identified five new projects this year, the first one being the digester, gas valve, and flame arresters replacement. The gas valves and flame arresters throughout the system are not in good condition, and the valves can't be properly operated. This is really a safety project, and so this project would replace 18 total gas valves and nine flame arresters. That's pretty much the gist of it.
And that's all within the facility? Those, all those fixes are there, down there on Mallard? Okay, great, thank you.
Any other questions on this one? Nope, okay. Next one is the polymer blend unit replacement for belt press number one and number two. Both of the polymer blend units have not been functioning properly. One of the controllers has failed and has bypassed, making it more complicated process of use. So, this project would replace both units with a more user-friendly unit, and the project cost is $40,000 Measure H fund. Any questions? All right. The next one is the primary clarifier, number one, drive unit rebuild. This was installed in the plant upgrade in 2009, and it's due for replacement at the cost of $30,000. Pretty simple. The next project is the secondary clarifier, number one, launders recoding. In 2024, we completed the recoding project, but the scope of work didn't include the launders, so the hope is that this would be the last piece that's needed to completely protect the entire system, and the estimated cost is $100,000. Any questions? Nope, okay. And then lastly is the variable frequency drive replacement for non-podable pump number two. This was installed in 1996, and it's reached its functional lifespan and needs to be replaced at the estimated cost of $20,000. And these projects are listed in order of their priority.
It must be nice to have projects that, A, most people, I mean, I think I know what some of these things are, sort of kind of globally, and they're all funded. So, you just kind of go, yeah. If we have questions, it's more like, well, where does that go?
This all goes to the Measure H and L committee also for their review?
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah.
It has.
Yeah, they've seen this once.
Yeah, they've already seen it. Yes.
All right. The next one's the annual street striping, and I believe Public Works Director Stone is going to cover that one.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Yes, the first one's the annual street striping. We did this last in 2024. When I first came here, they were doing it every year, then we went to every other year, and there was a bigger gap than that. But basically, what this is, is all the center lines, fog lines throughout the city. After that, there's another SB 1 project that I put in there for thermoplastic crosswalk striping. And what this would do is, with conventional paint, we get a lot shorter lifespan out of it. When we paint major intersections like Home Depot or Rayleigh's, like, something like that, it takes a lot of our resources to have guys out there for traffic control, and then they're standing there watching the paint dry. This thermoplastic, much longer lifespan with it, hoping to get at least like five to 10 years out of that, having another contractor come and do it. After that, we have a small center street parking lot fence repair. What this would do is, there is some erosion on the wall. Where basically drainage has gone down and kind of deteriorated some of that area. We would stabilize that area there, replace the bollards, replace the fence, clean up all the vegetation around it, make it so that it's a little bit more long-lasting, because a lot of the people coming out of the lyre's bench like to use that fence as a stop instead of some of the bollards that should be there. After that, we have water meter radio points. This is one that's been in several years before. What these are, basically, it's a radio device that connects to the water meter, and so at some places, like on Highway 49, we've got some meter boxes that are like right there at the edge of the road, and it's not safe for the guys to be out there pulling the boxes open, anything like that. So, these have the capability of either walk-by and touch or drive-by. So, the guys can just drive by in the truck, they're not getting out in weird intersections. It really improves our efficiency and safety with those things. And after that, we have lead water service replacement. This is one that's been in here several other years before. A few years back, we were approved with a timeline for replacement with the state to approve, basically what it was, to go out and identify 400 suspected addresses that could potentially have a lead water service. We were finding that less than half of those actually had those. Last year, the state made some other change, actually it was at the federal level, made some other changes in regards to us identifying both our lines for every single water service in the city, as well as the customer side, the service material. So, that's been, some of you might have seen the letters that went out for notifications of unknown service-type material. That's a requirement from the state. But what this is, is just funding that would allow us to have a contractor. We've, we've been doing a lot of those replacements in-house. This is building the bank to allow a contractor to come in and get some of those harder ones and maybe be a little more efficient with that.
What happens if we find a lead on the house side or the building side of our meter? Isn't that their responsibility?
So, there's, there's a lot of things that are changing with that every time that we get new documentation from both the state and federal level.
Right.
There were some things that, some of the last guidance that went out basically said that we needed to provide financing for anybody that would encounter one of those, with the requirement that they pay us back for the construction. If we had a contractor working on our side, we were supposed to allow them the opportunity. There's, there's a lot of different things. I don't know how many of those are going to change. I know that a lot of those are being challenged. Some of those, some of those are being challenged by the American Water Works Association. It's a pretty big group. And then I know that there is also federal legislation introduced at the beginning of the year to nullify all those requirements, so.
Okay, all right.
We're doing what we need to, and waiting and seeing with the rest of it.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for the parking lot. That's, because that's embarrassing, then put that together. I know, but it's still embarrassing.
Nick, what's the, what's the expected lifespan on those radio points? Any ideas?
I have no idea, but I'll look into that and get back to you.
Curiosity.
We've been, we've been putting them in for quite a few years, and I haven't seen any of them break yet, so that's good.
All right, thanks, Nick. So, here we have the purple bar spreadsheet again, and at the very bottom, you can see what the total is by fund. For example, general fund, $37,225. Gas tax fund, which is our RMA SB 1, $273,000. All the way across, you can see the total is $4,634,142.
I'm assuming that everything but the general fund, sorry, projects, those are funded through those measures, right? We're not, we don't have a problem with that?
Based on our current forecasts.
Right, of course.
SB 1, we may have to trim there, depending on what you choose. There's another proposal for Meridian barricades, which would also come from that funding that kind of puts us over the top a little bit. Measure L, Measure H, Measure L, they're.
It obviously depends.
Water Enterprise Fund, we may have to trim that a bit.
Right, but.
Downtown.
Lion's share.
Yes, the lion's share is doable.
Lion's share of every one of those that is in general fund is pretty much taken.
Correct.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions regarding CIP? All right, let's go ahead and move on to, oh, sorry.
Well, I would assume Sue just would have spoken up, but do you have any questions about our capital improvements program requests? Okay, great. There you go. All right. Sue's satisfied. Let's move on.
All right, moving on to, these colors are kind of, it's a darker orange, burnt orange, I guess. It's a blue bar spreadsheet, and then you have the capital outlay request behind that. And the first one is a police motorcycle. Chief, if you can walk us through that.
This would be if we get a traffic position approved.
Okay.
So moving on.
That's addressed in our ASLs.
Okay. Macyle used to ride a motor back in the day. Traffic is our number one complaint from the citizens, so we put together an ASL for a traffic officer position, and, you know, motorbike goes hand-in-hand with that. The next one is digital rifle sights, night vision. We're asking for six of those. It's just sighting system that goes on top of our patrol rifles that the officers, without giving away their position, utilizing white light, can utilize this setup and see in the dark. Any questions? Next is the mission darkness locker. This is that Faraday locker, that's secure locker. I asked them what they're doing now, so they're taking, every case we have, we seem to secure as evidence electronic devices. So they're putting them all in Faraday bags and then booking them into evidence. This would actually sit down in detectives' because it's secured, where they can pull them and then dump them down there instead of going through what they currently go through. It's a nicety. If I had to, if I had to put the level of importance, it would be the rifle, the cabinet, the rifle sights the cabinet and then the motorcycle, unless we get the traffic officer. That's number one. Any questions about any of this?
We'll just make a quick comment. I mean, this, you know, this is becoming more and more important. You know, I just saw in South Lake Tahoe, they just arrested a dealer for four overdoses and charging him with murder, and they got it through cellphone data. And I can tell you, when my brother died of an overdose, they attempted to get the dealer from his cellphone and were not able to. So if this could, you know, bring some justice to a family, I think this is a great idea.
Great.
So the next one is the front mount blower, and I believe Director Nishihara has this one, if you could introduce that. Spectrometer?
Spectrometer.
Sorry about that, I jumped ahead.
I'll take the spectrometer money. I'm just kidding.
Yes.
Really?
I don't even know how to pronounce it, so that's, you guys are doing better than me.
Spectro photometer.
Spectro photometer? All right, we're going with that. Apparently, this is a crucial tool used to measure concentration of various substances and parameters in wastewater samples, helping to monitor and control the effectiveness of the treatment processes. This would really help staff at the plant reduce the need for additional external testing services and provide more efficient sampling while there is limited lavatory help right now, so.
All right. Now, the front mount blower.
This is a replacement equipment for existing blower that we, is no longer operable. This would allow us to blow and keep the trails clean. Electric golf cart is to support Goldbug and some of our visitors and participants that visit the park to offset some of the ADA accessibilities in certain aspects of the park. The following three pieces of equipment, including picnic tables, park benches, and bleachers, are all replacement of existing equipment that needs to be addressed. The item nineteen for the outdoor sound system is to install a formidable sound system in the downtown area, both for events and for emergency services. The portable stage is for our special events, both in the downtown and would be utilized in other areas, including Goldbug, Lions Park, and Benham Park, should we want to be able to host outside events. The last line there, item number twenty-one, which would probably be number one if I were to prioritize these, is AED, automatic electronic defibrillators, which have become a state standard, and that would be primarily at Goldbug Park. We currently do have a few at Aquatic Center and throughout some of our public buildings. And then the last one is the swamp cooler for the stamp mill up at the Goldbug. There's currently no HVAC system during the summertime. It does become very difficult. It's very hot, and we take a lot of tours, especially during the summertime and towards the ending of the school year. With that, you have my report, and if you have any questions, I'm available.
I don't have any questions, but I was at some event downtown, it was a large gathering, I forget what it was, and I think I ran into Bill Robey, I think it was Bill, and he said he wanted to put up a sound system. Now, Bill doesn't run the foundation anymore, but he still has some connections. We might want to, I'm not, and I'm being serious about this, we might want to talk to Bill. I think, I'm pretty sure it was Bill. Pretty sure. He might have been drinking, but it was Bill. And he said he would like to do something, so we should get in touch with him, because this is something he said he wanted to do. He wanted to have sound on Main Street. And if we don't get a swamp cooler, doesn't that just recreate how it was in 1850? I bet you nobody, I bet you nobody was having a good time in 1850.
We have a little more liability than they did back then.
Okay, fine. Anyway, all right. But I'm not kidding about Bill or whatever. I'd go to Bill first, and then.
So what I didn't see on here is we, I thought we had put aside fifty thousand dollars to replace the play structure over at Orchard Park.
And it's still there.
But the playground's not there.
Playground not done, but the money is still there.
So in talking to our new community service director, he tells me he thinks that may not be enough to replace the playground. And so I just want to make the comment that, you know, rather than picnic tables and benches and bleachers, I'd like to see us get our playgrounds up to snuff and things like that.
All right.
I have one more question. Dennis, can you elaborate on the, so the stage, what's the, you know, we're renting them now, you know, what's the ROI? What's the, you know, how long is it going to take us to make that back? If that makes sense?
Right now, the average cost, I believe, is anywhere from about six to seven hundred dollars. I think we get a pretty decent discount, so maybe about, I try to do the math.
Two years.
Give or take.
Okay. Essentially pay for itself in two years.
Correct. And it would be, it would also be an opportunity for us to rent for other individuals who host events in certain areas. It is a portable stage, so can we set up downtown or in a park?
Thank you.
The bleachers, I mean, are they, are we getting to a liability issue on the bleachers or just they need to be, you know, it's kind of looking at them and saying, we need to replace these, but they're not like a hazard yet?
They're to standard currently. Definitely want to take a long-term look at replacing them.
Okay, all right.
I also wanted to mention, I'm out there, and none of the flag football people are using those bleachers. So I would have us look at how much they're actually being used when I look at the price tag versus the picnic tables and the benches and things.
I'm assuming, though, we're talking about the bleachers on the softball fields. They get, I mean, when, I don't know, I haven't been to a softball game in a while, but they used to get used pretty good when we had softball games. I remember when I was playing softball, they got filled up, but, you know, I mean, yeah, like, yeah, well, the flag football, you just go sit by the field. I mean, it's, you kind of bring your own chair kind of thing. Anyway, just an observation.
Okay. Thank you, Dennis. Moving on, let's see, we have our meridian barricades. If I can find it here. Here, there it is. Mr. Stone, if you could.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. The meridian barricades are the ones that you'll see down on Main Street for special events. Right now, if we want to use those, they're like a community resource, I guess, through Folsom. And we need to send two of our guys down, a truck from Public Works, to go get them. That burns up a whole day, and then hauling them back down there burns up another day. So Mr. Nishihara was working on some stuff with the cannabis benefit fund, and so I think that we can combine those two things and with SB1 funding, because traffic control devices aren't allowable use for SB1. I think this is a really good project, and it's going to free up our guys to go and do other things besides driving back and forth hauling barricades in the truck all day.
And they look like they last forever.
Yeah, I don't think my guys could even break those things.
Yeah, but, I mean, they don't, they don't, I mean, they don't look like they'll deteriorate much. I mean, obviously, everything does, but they look like they would be a long-term investment.
And that also includes the trailer. The trailer's a pretty big cost with that, too, because it's hydraulic lowering deck and all those things to go. I think the trailer alone's like fifty grand.
Okay.
Any questions? Next is a plate compactor. What that is, we've got one of those right now. It's a piece of equipment that we use all the time, smooth on the bottom to do finished compaction on asphalt. So we're using that for any larger pothole repairs, for repairs of asphalt that are smaller than what our roller would use for them. So just basically like spot patches and things like that. After that, we have the rammer compactor. That's what Mr. Clerychi was just doing his hand motions with. That's like a jumping jack, like a giant, one that goes up and down. That's used more for more preliminary type work, like when you're putting like base rock in ditches, when they're deeper down, so it's beating it down down there. And we have one now, it just gets used a lot, and it's getting aged out. Our mechanic spends a lot of time working on it. After that, we have a valve exerciser. What that is, it's basically a tool that's going to go out there. A lot of the valves that we have haven't been exercised for a long time, so it's going to be a balancing act with this one to make sure that we don't break anything that hasn't been exercised for a while. But it allows for the guys to be more efficient, probably less back injuries with having the mechanical means of just going out there and turning those valves. After that, we have a micro meter tester. What this does is it allows you to test how efficient the meters are reading in place. Right now, what we do is if somebody complains about a meter, we'll take it off, we'll, we work with EID to get them bench tested, do things like that to say, hey, your readings are off or it's accurate. This is going to save labor and time from the guys having to pull those out because they can do them in place. And then it's also going to say, you know, that if we're reading more efficiently, then we're going to capture any revenue that was being lost, because right now, when the meters read, they're basically in favor of the customer with the readings being off. And after that, we have a sewer nozzles kit. The hydrojetter's one of our other pieces of equipment that gets used a lot. The nozzles for that are pretty heavy-duty and industrial, and because they've just got high-pressurized water that's going up and down the sewer lines, cleaning stuff out. Over time, a lot of those have got worn down. A few of them have got dropped into the collection system, and we haven't got them back from the wharf yet, so they're floating around and they're somewhere. And that's it for me. Any questions?
Thanks, Dad. Do we have any questions from the public on this list of things? Would you?
It's actually a repeat from last year.
Office chairs.
Office chairs.
They want to sit?
And not always, but when they do.
What is wrong with these people?
Chairs are nineteen years old. They're worn out and stained, and so if there's a way to fund them, that would be great, but we understand if we can't, so we'll get by if we have to.
That's sad.
So looking at.
Dave?
Yes.
Is there a way to break that up over, I mean, maybe we can break it up over a couple of years and replace them in little small chunks?
Yeah, that's a great idea. Actually, we may have a little bit of carryover in our department that we could possibly use this year, and then maybe a little bit next year.
Who gets the new chair?
That would be the big question. But yeah, maybe a rolling replacement would be easier.
You get to choose. You get to.
That is a no. Hard no.
Because it's your idea, so you get to say, you get one, not so much you. Okay.
It's a lottery, yeah.
No.
I think, I think I would, all right. So the blue bar spreadsheet, you can see the total of all these requests is three-hundred-and-ten-thousand, three-hundred-and-ninety-eight dollars. Ninety-eight thousand, eight-hundred-and-seventy dollars is allocated to the general fund, and then you can see the water, sewer, gas tax, benefit fund, and the grant fund. Any questions?
Once again, so anything that's not general fund, it's all in these other funds. We have estimates, we might have to do some trimming, but most of this stuff can get paid for.
Water sewer's going to be tight until we get our rate study done.
Oh, okay.
The highway user tax, we could fund most of those meridians.
Okay.
We may need to trim back on some of our projects if we want to do all the meridians or.
Or get fewer meridians.
Fewer meridians this year.
We could do that. My recommendation actually would be I put in the thermoplastic striping before we had the meridians, and I'd be fine with that going away and just doing solely meridians.
Okay. How many meridians do you need? Well, it says fourteen, but do we need fourteen to close Main Street?
The fourteen number came based on the amount of funding that we had available. Initially, it was like, there was eight of them that were in there. I think that was one trailer load, and they were around like five thousand dollars apiece. I know a guy who said he's going to get me a better deal on them, because he knows people in quantity, so we'll see how that goes.
Okay, all right. All right. Thank you.
As far as community benefit and the grant, we believe we can fund those.
Yeah. All right.
All right, let's move on to ASLs, the red tab. You have a kind of a yellow bar spreadsheet as well as the request, and the first one is the traffic enforcement officer, the chief referenced that in regards to the motorcycle. So with that, I'll hand it over to Chief Ron.
This is the accessory to the motorcycle.
I like that. If you're going to get a motorcycle, you have to have this accessory.
You know, traffic's a tricky thing in town. Anybody that drives understands the challenges of the motoring public, and we're often the sounding board for their frustration. So we try to, we try to mitigate a lot of those that we identify as safety issues through direct enforcement activities. A lot of times, that's covered through our Officer Traffic Safety Grant, so we're pooling people and having them do that, that type of duty on an overtime basis, which is all covered by the, by the grant. Unfortunately, throughout the years, we've had significant traffic collisions, and some of those have resulted in fatalities. So working, I know we work closely with engineering to help mitigate a lot of those issues, but having a person dedicated, because it won't take long for word to get out that Placerville has a motorcycle officer driving around, people hopefully will start to pay more attention while they're motoring through town. So that's the intent behind this. Not a super high priority position, but a position that I do believe will have a positive impact on the community, especially apples hill type season when we have such a hard time getting around town anyway, so. Next is the police officer position. We unfunded one last year. That was my officer that was assigned directly to deal with the homeless issue. So we need, we need some, in order to have a meaningful impact, we need somebody to be proactive in the follow-up, you know, getting out of cars and looking in areas where people secrete themselves. Our patrol officers do a great job, but they're moving about town. They are hitting the major thoroughfares and some of the surface streets. They're not getting out walking vacant properties. So a lot of that activity is either done by me identifying a special detail to go out and do it, or it's complaint-driven. By the time it's complaint-driven, it doesn't take long for these folks to completely just annihilate an area. So having that position that can go to those spots that we know are hotspots for this activity and just, you know, if these folks don't want to take advantage of resources that are available to them, at least they're going to have somebody tell them, you can't do this here, you need to, you need to move along. So that's the intent of that position. They will also have the added responsibility of dealing with drugs, not necessarily a dedicated drug enforcement officer, but we found that ninety-three percent of our drug offenses right now are, do involve the transient population, so we need to, we need to be more meaningful in tracking a lot of that stuff, so. Next is community service vehicle abatement officer. This is a position that will just address quality of. just address quality of life issues that we have throughout the town, neighbors complaining about other neighbors, uh, and the way that neighbor chooses to live that may be in violation of our, our city ordinances, this would be the position that would go out and facilitate conversations and get people back into compliance, so it just kind of improves the quality of life throughout town. And last, but definitely not least, this is, um, an additional dispatcher position, if we get this position, we will then have two people in our PSAP at all times, uh, the challenge is, right now, we, we don't, there's a large portion of time, uh, that there's only one in there, the challenges with that are, are, you know, FSLA issues and stuff like that, so we just want to try to mitigate some of that, so, any questions? So, we approved them all, right? Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Chief. And the next one we have is the administrative assistant position in the Development Services Department, Director, Interim Director Cahill, if you could cover that one.
This, this proposed modification is for a, it unfreezes administrative assistant position that had traditionally been funded, and, uh, there's, there's a strong need for clerical support in the planning and building department, that's what this position would take care of, um, just my observation in the four months that I've been here, I think you could get away, like, I would propose an offset, which would be that, I don't think planning needs a full-time code enforcement officer, not from what I've seen, and I think that position could be spread more globally through the organization, so that they're assisting engineering and, and, uh, police on code enforcement matters, um, because, you know, and there's quite a few code violations that probably could be handled by the planner, this, the city planner position, you know, when it's a, it's a banner or a sign, it's pretty simple, like, call up the business and say, take the sign down, or get a permit for it, so, things like that, so that... So, that's, that's the thinking here, but there is a strong need for clerical support, um, the department stays open, uh, during lunch hour, if you have, you know, the building inspector slash official is out on inspection, you have, um, code enforcement officer out, you, oftentimes are scrambling to, you have your director basically handling the counter, so, you know, that's, that's part of what this position handles, and, um, so that's, that's the nature of the request, thank you.
Thank you, Carl, uh, moving on to the next one, which is the Water Reclamation Facility Chief Plant Operator Position Salary, and Ms. Savage.
Thanks, um, so this is a program expansion, uh, adjusting the salary of the chief plant operator, um, by five percent, um, right now, we have had the position vacant since June of last year, and we have a part-time contractor helping, as well as a senior operator currently also helping to fill the role in addition to doing his normal senior operator duties, um, so staff is, uh, pretty stretched thin, over there, we need to get a permanent person in that position.
Can I jump in too on this one, just to give you a, a heads up, uh, we're going to bring this back to you actually at your next council meeting, try to take, take effect immediately, we've got to do something to try and get this, get some help out of the plant, and so this will be on your next agenda for consideration, just for your information.
All right, next is the Water Reclamation Facility Senior Operator Position, and this is really a new position, um, this kind of in combination with, um, the Operator Advancement Program is aimed at creating two distinct levels, the senior operators are, um, in charge of everything, and then there would be lower-level operators that are operator one, two, or three underneath them, and so, um, we're just looking at kind of restructuring the organization over there to, um, really incentivize staff to take that next step to be the on-call person, and have those additional duties, as well as getting the lower-level operators motivated to, um, get the certificates to move up in their positions as well. And the other one is the Maintenance Mechanic Position, um, the senior maintenance mechanic is nearing retirement, I think we talked about this last year, this year, he's even more closer to retiring, so, I'm just going to say, if we don't get this filled, we're going to run out of time, but he has a lot of background knowledge, and we're really hoping to get another person in there to train under him before he does retire, and let's hope that doesn't happen soon. That's all.
Quick question on the, uh, the senior operator position, so it's the eighteen thousand dollar numbers, is that just, obviously, it's not a new full-time employee, it's just, that's too small of a number, what does that represent?
I think I'll let Dave answer this, because there's some pluses and minuses in the positions...
What, what we're doing is, we have three operator, three positions that are being changed to a senior operator position, correct, Dave?
Okay, so it's essentially upgrading...
So, it's just that difference in cost between those that we currently have, it's mostly a title change, some, but a, a little bit more than that.
Excellent, thank you.
Melissa, did you address the advancement program?
Yeah, I kind of addressed it in the senior operator discussion, but yeah, I mean, it's basically, once they get their certificates, they automatically be able to advance to the next, um, level.
Just one, one more time, um, on these position changes at the Water Reclamation Facility, those changes are being proposed in the rate study that is, you'll be coming back to you, so that's where that fund would come in, if, if approved, that would take effect with, with that.
When did we see the rate study?
Uh, most likely on or around or after the budget adoption.
Okay, so in July?
July, yeah.
June, July, yeah, okay.
July on.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Alright, the next one is the Maintenance Worker One Position, and this is for the Community Services Department, and Director Nisha Hara will cover this one.
Uh, this individual, we would add to our existing workforce for parks, facilities, and maintenance, um, I, I know there's a difference in between what the Maintenance Worker One and a Maintenance Worker Due to us, but this is a cost-effective way for us to address some of our more daily and ongoing maintenance in regards to, an example would be cleaning public restrooms, there's a, there's a very unique nuance in regards to hiring and contracting an individual to clean a restroom, but then having to deal with graffiti at the same time, and so we had attempted to do some of that previously, by doing some of it internally, and realized that it didn't work, we didn't find the right person, or however the situation had turned out, and then we transitioned to contracting out, and then realized that, you know, if you have a stuck toilet or something needs to be painted at the same time you're out there, why not have the same individual do it, right, and so we want to be able to capitalize on that, and be cost-effective in regards to the type of position that we hire, uh, Maintenance Worker Two versus a Maintenance Worker One, allowing us an entry-level, um, uh, position to get started with those pieces. Uh, second to that is a position that we previously had in the budget for, uh, the last fiscal year, uh, that was, uh, fro- frozen, this individual would not only provide some office support, but some expansion in regards to our leisure enrichment, we do have a, a specialist that has dual duties, and as we've adopted that special events process that was pretty robust over the last year that we worked on, we're starting to realize that not only is the permitting process, you know, a, a daily task, but it, it is a project-based kind of opportunity, where individuals come in that may not know the nuances of planning an expansive event, and so we find ourselves not just being counselors, but trainers and coaches as they go through to acquire their permit, you know, and so that has been a little time-consuming, so this other individual for the recorded would not only do recreation programming, but would help with office support and expanding some of our leisure enrichment programs, which currently our superintendent is planning and doing and managing the enrichment piece. Those are the only two positions I'm available for questions, if you have any.
Are these both currently frozen positions that we're asking to unfreeze, or is one just not filled? Okay.
Alright, so the next one is the Deputy Public Works Director, and Mr. Stone will cover that one.
Thank you. Um, this Deputy Public Works Director position would replace, uh, what we currently have as a superintendent, there'd be some additional tasks, seems like every time I open my email, there's more regulatory requirements from both state and federal level for our water system, our sewer collection system, uh, even our utility locating stuff is, it's getting kind of crazy, uh, what they're asking us to do, and, um, this would elevate that position just into doing a lot more things that, that I'm currently doing, and trying to spread out that workload. Uh, the next one is Utility Service Technician, currently, we've got one Utility Service Technician, and he takes care of sampling all the, or I'm sorry, testing all the backflows within the city that are located on businesses, um, doing our weekly water sampling, our lead-in copper water sampling, uh, any additional water sampling, if we have a water main break, and we need to do that to make sure that we're still providing safe water to people, um, this is, this is a higher skill level position than our maintenance workers are, and so, because of some of those increases in regulatory requirements that we had, um, a really good example of that is, uh, the USAs, so before, there was a guy that was here, I need to walk around with witching sticks and do them, now we're using, uh, ground penetrating radar, a bunch of different stuff, and there's, there's timelines when we need to report those to, like, if a contractor calls that in, we, we're tasked with going out and making those locates within seventy-two hours, and if we don't do that, it's a huge liability for the city, if the contractor hits something, um, that's one additional task that we would put on this Utility Service Technician positions when we fill them, right now, uh, our superintendent's doing it, and our maintenance mechanic's doing it, but it's a, it's a higher level thing that I think you need a higher level, um, these, these positions would require like a distribution certificates for the water distribution system, and that's something that's going to have a lot more benefit with those, um, the other thing that we would have them doing is, right now, we haven't, we don't have a valve exercising program, been working with fire a little bit on hydrant stuff, um, so these, these positions would also be tasked with those things, for exercising the hydrants, maintaining them, um, right now, if we don't, if a, if a hydrant goes bad from lack of exercising, it's twelve to eighteen thousand dollars to fix, so with a little bit of preventive maintenance, we can extend the life of those things. Any questions? And next, I also have a Maintenance Worker Advancement Program, what this would be is if somebody was a Maintenance Worker One, and they obtained a certificate, and they'd had satisfactory reviews, they would automatically get bumped up into that other level of, um, being a Maintenance Worker Two, so it's additional income, money in their pocket, and then it's a, it's a good benefit for the city, having those guys have certs, because they're, they're more proficient in doing their jobs out there, they can do higher level things for us. Questions?
We'd have to ask them that.
Thank you, Nick, and all those positions Nick went through are also assumed in the water wastewater study, so, should be coming to you. Alright, then looking at the bottom line, um, let me increase the size of this, so you can read it, so, the total price tag for those positions, uh, is one million, two hundred and ten thousand, six hundred and twenty-one dollars, of which, uh, eight hundred and sixty-six thousand, eight hundred and sixty-five dollars is general fund, twenty-four thousand, three ten, parking, and then you could see the other funds across there on the yellow bar.
I have a question, since it looks like we're getting into training and some non-personnel things, um, it seems like, my guess is that the decisions we're going to make on the, on the wastewater side, all this stuff that this rate thing is going to maybe impact, my guess is it's about ninety percent baked already, I mean, we, we know what we get, the rates are almost always going to go up, I mean, we're, I'm sorry, shouldn't probably just say that, probably get hung, but, you know, I mean, the reality is, is rates, rates never go down, so, I mean, presumably, we're going to be raising rates, I guess my question would be, how do we want to approach this in this budgeting process, because we could budget for some stuff, and then the rate thing may come through, and then we'll have to, I don't know, help me out here, I'm, I'm kind of stumbling, but you, you seem, can you see the confusion?
Yeah.
Why it's happening? Okay, great, thank you.
I think Dave and I, we, we've thought about this a little bit, so, if you approve this in the budget, we would, we would hold off on making the changes...
Okay, I'm done, basically, we could approve it and then wait, alright.
Just in case there was a change with that.
Okay, per, thank you very much, that's...
I agree, yep.
Yeah, so, I just don't want to re- repeat work, replicate work, or if we have, you know, if you came back and said, well, no, we'd have to start from scratch and do things, but if, if, basic, and like I said, I think we're ninety percent baked when we approve the budget, and then this water, the rate thing will just kind of clarify what we might be able to do beyond that, okay, alright, thank you.
Cool, any other questions regarding ASLs? Seeing none, we'll move on to conference training and travel, which is the green bar there, under the green tab, and, a lot of data here, uh, the first one is...
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
Oh, sorry.
Before we go any further, do, do we want to take like a five-minute break, stand up, or no? You don't want to take a, yeah, we...
Get some pizza.
You have some pizza, get some more pizza, let's just take, and may, and we'll make it a real five minutes, just five minutes, get up, stretch your legs, if you have to use the facilities, go do it.
Thank you, Callan, for today.
Yeah, that would do it, yes. I'm always very cognizant of that, you know, it's like, yeah, you know, people need to get, plus you just need to give them a walk around a little bit.
Or do five jumping jacks.
Yeah, there you go.
So, the green bar, you have the total for all of these, and you can see that net of, so the chief mentioned post-police officer standards and training on the far right, if approved, we could obtain approximately $1,600. We're still waiting for the state to divulge what those rates are, but we think we could obtain about $1,600 in reimbursement against those trainings, which total $110,000, so net would be $108,922. And then, you can see by fund, general fund $82,795, and then water sewer, which again, we would incorporate that in our rate study to address those. So that, that's our conference training and travel proposals for you. And that is all we have tonight, unless there are any, is there anything the council would like to see in the budget, or, anything?
Can we have some more money? That would be great.
Yeah, Cleve and I are still looking for that money tree, we're, I haven't quite found it yet.
I'll be planting when he finds it. Yeah, yeah. I, do, do we have, seriously, are there, are there any questions?
Can I, can I mention one thing, Mayor?
You may mention two things, if you'd like.
One thing that's frustrating to me, if you looked at, on the, the page for the reimbursements for post-training...
It's like nothing.
We used to get 75 to 90% of those were, were covered, and now, I'm looking at a training that's, that's what, $625, and they'll pay $40 towards it, literally, I mean...
So they don't care?
If you ever have that opportunity to talk to legislators, that is a huge item that, to me, that mandatory training, I love our police partners, I think they do a fantastic, we've got fantastic police officers. We're constantly being hit with, you know, they need more training, they need to do things, but there's not funding coming down to do that from the state, so, I just wanna, that's, just in the last 10 years, 14 years I've been here...
Well, even in the time I've been around, that number, those numbers used to be a lot bigger.
We used to make money on some of the things.
Well, that's the problem, we were probably, yeah.
That explains a lot.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. All right. Anybody else, anything else? Public! Publix! Don't we have another member now? We got Publix? Yeah. Well, yeah. You're abso, well, you're absolutely right. You're absolutely right. I don't wanna comment on what we can and can't ignore, because in a couple of weeks, might, we might have to tell you what we're gonna ignore, and, and it's gonna be real painful, but, but I agree with you, and, without, I, I mean, we need to know what the, they're gonna process numbers, they're gonna give us the budgets and stuff, it's gonna be pretty grim, I'm gonna assume. And, you know, sometimes, I mean, we may have to make some bold decisions about stuff in terms of what we wanna buy from, don't tell Dave, reserves, and, I mean, I, you gotta look at all that stuff, cause you have to move things forward, you know, you gotta move things forward, and sometimes that means you have to kind of maybe take a little bit out of the kitty. Obviously, we don't wanna get involved with, like, things that they've done in other governments near here, where they've obligated against ongoing operational things, which then bites you in the rear end. But if there's one-off stuff that can be gotten, either training or whatnot, I, I am willing to take a bit more expansive look at some of that stuff. There you go. Anyway, any other comments? All right. Kirk?
The meeting started at 5:00. I, I just...
Yeah, okay. All right, if there's nothing else.
Oh, sorry. Oh, wait. Mayor, if I may?
You may.
So your next budget workshop is tentatively scheduled for...
The 20th.
Today, the 20th. And if it's possible to start that at 4:00, I don't know if that works for, I know it works for... Right, okay.
Oh, oh, that's right, yeah.
Yes.
Yes, okay. You can, yeah, you can drink while we're doing this? You can just be like, you can drink? Yeah, really.
Appreciate the feedback, we'll set it for 4:00.
Okay, all right, thank you. Thank you very much. 4:00 on the 20th, that's the day before I leave on my vacation. I'll be, yeah, I'm, I'll mostly be, I'll be mostly here, probably. Anyway, all right, thank you very much, have a good evening, we love you guys, you're the best ever. Jurn.